We have nothing to report. If we could move to roll call.
Good evening. Board member Crystal Sawyer White.
Present.
Board member Gary Hack.
I'm here.
Board member Diane Gibson Gray.
Here.
Board vice president Deborah Vincent.
Present.
Board president Walter Ruley.
Present. Flag salute.
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to approve the board minutes?
Some of them.
Second by trustee Gibson Gray, second by trustee Hack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda carries. Approval of board minutes, pardon me. We move to superintendent reports.
I just want to say we are off and running with our summer programs. We have 14 programs at nine different sites with about 2,200 students this summer. And everything is going smoothly, so thank you to the staff that helped organize that. And also, I just want to give a special thank you right now to our maintenance department, who work throughout the summer to get our buildings up and running and clean for the new school year. They're working hard and some pretty, them and the grounds people. Last week, as you know, we had that horrible heat wave and I saw many of them just continue to keep on at it. And so I just want to thank them. They do a lot of work that goes unnoticed sometimes, so.
And we have air conditioning in this room this evening?
Because of them. So, that's all.
Thank you. Moving to public comments, number five on the agenda, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. We have two groups, we're going to mix them up here, staff and the public. We normally don't do that, but they're all speaking on the same subject, which is Dozier-Libby. So the first person is Jeff Collins.
Good evening, board president Ruley, members of the board, superintendent Anello, and members of cabinet. I'm here to give you a little history on Dozier-Libby Medical High School and some conditions that exist out there. As you know, the site was built in 2008, and when Dozier-Libby was being planned and constructed, the plans were to have residential development surrounding the site and the extension of Sand Creek. Unfortunately, those developments did not occur. Consequently, what that has left is Dozier-Libby as an island of green and an otherwise sea of California gold, in other words weeds. As a result of that, it has become a magnet for gophers and ground squirrels that have had a serious negative impact on the playfield at that facility. Over the years, maintenance and grounds has made many attempts to recondition the field, renovate the field, reseed the field. It has been successful for a very short period of time, but unfortunately, the population of gophers and ground squirrels tend to win out. It has left the field in a condition that's unplayable and unusable. We've actually also contracted with a weekly service that goes out and aggressively attempts to control these populations, but they are just too overwhelming for all efforts that have been attempted. Last year, in approximately April, the site, staff, and principal determined that the site was just too unsafe to play on and consequently, maintenance fenced the field and since it has been unusable. There have been, prior to the closure, a number of injuries to students and I believe one staff member. So the situation out in those fields are definitely serious and require some action. And with that, thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Bergerhaus.
Good evening, board president Ruley, vice president Deborah Vincent, board trustees Diane Gibson Gray, Gary Hack, Crystal Sawyer White, superintendent Anello, and cabinet. I just want to reiterate a little bit about what Jeff was saying. He actually took my entire speech. Actually, you know, this is my third, I finished my third year at Dozier-Libby, and what I've noticed is a tremendous amount of holes and the field in and of itself, as we participate on the field, turns into a dirt pan, a hard pan. And there's actually holes out there that you can actually step into up to your ankle. And I know that our two PE teachers, on a daily basis throughout the winter, try to fill in those holes every morning, and only to see that two days later, the same holes are out there. And so what I was seeing was an increased amount of injuries come across my desk from the field. Twisted ankles, twisted knees, broken ankle, separated shoulder. And so at that point, I spoke with Jeff Collins and we deemed that as unsafe and it creates a huge liability for the school as well as the school district. And so I closed the field down for play last November. And, you know, I just want to thank maintenance and operations because they have come out diligently and tried to, they reseeded, they aerated, they graded, did everything they can, and it works for a little bit and then the same problem occurs. And so what I did was, we have a fabulous advisory board, and I've reached out to the advisory board and it's a standing agenda item. And I want to thank Tanika Knott, who's the manager of emergency services as Kaiser Permanente and Antioch Medical Center. She's here tonight. She has reached out to her resources and has hooked me up with a nonprofit organization called Linking Sports and Communities. And the executive director is here tonight, the regional director for Northern California. And the president was going to be here tonight, but he had a family emergency. He is Cameron Colvin, who was with the 49ers in the early 2000s, and now he has done wonderful work with, as president of this nonprofit organization called Linking Sports and Communities. They are seeking funding to provide artificial turf for the entire field, approximately 80,000 square feet, no cost to the district. And I just want to thank Tanika for reaching out. She's been absolutely fabulous. And again, the regional director here is here tonight to provide you with some more information regarding that. But I want to thank them personally for reaching out and providing support for our school district as well as Dozier-Libby. So, thank you.
If I'm pronouncing this correctly, Nanyay Agbodun?
Hi, good evening. Such kind words. I'm like, yes. So, when they reached out to us, we quickly, I came out and I took a look at it myself and I did see all of the complexities with the field. It is pretty dangerous. I grew up in sports myself. So what we did, real briefly, I know I only have two minutes, we had a contractor come out and look at it and do an evaluation. I do have some notes for you. So with that is our progress report, so what we've been doing thus far and the results and all of the assessments, everything compiled on a timeline. And then we also have a little bit of information about our organization as well as the process of solution, which is to replace the grass with an artificial turf. It is pricey, I will say that. So we've kind of been digging into our resources on trying to get that funded. We would love to have the support of the school district if possible. So that's just kind of where we're at now. So there's more details. I have a few handouts for all of you to take a look at where we have been so far. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Tanika Knott, speaking on the same subject.
Good evening, board. My name is Tanika Knott, and I am not only an advisory board member, but I am one of the managers for Kaiser Antioch Medical Center Emergency Department. As Scott stated, I am new to the advisory board about a year ago, and I must say that it seemed a bit intimidating initially to join the board. There are a lot of clinicians there, and I come from a manager that is a non-clinical background. However, when Scott mentioned the field and the need and how he had reached out and was unable to get responses, I immediately said, this is my project, this is my time to be able to do something for this board in a way that I feel like not only helps the board, but helps the community and helps the students. Since joining the advisory board, I have taken on many projects at the school, and I also have had two student interns, which I currently have one right now. This is my second one, kind of within a month spacing of one another. So immediately, I did reach out to quite a few nonprofit organizations that I was aware of, and Linking Sports was the first one to respond and say an immediate yes. And to me, it was surprising. I was on vacation, so I'm emailing Scott, like, I'm on vacation, but this organization wants to work with this. And he's like, I'm on vacation too, but we're trying to arrange the meetings. And graciously, they came out, did the assessment, and they've been working very closely with us. And I just felt that, seeing a school that has so many accolades and so many high-achieving students that have amazing stories and amazing accomplishments, I felt that it would only be a best service to give back to this school in some way, shape, or form. And I was just hoping that by partnering with the school and the Linking Sports organization that we would be able to do this. As Nanyay mentioned, we are, and they are looking for resources so that it is no cost to the district. We just asked that we would have that support for something that would be so great to not only the school, but the district, and to just highlight the students and being able to have them have a field and have use, you know, of it for anything that they'd like to do. And that's why we wanted to come today before you guys. So I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one other guest speaker on another subject, Dr. Rashid. Lawrence Rashid, I saw here a moment ago.
Good evening, president Ruley, superintendent Anello. My name is Dr. Lawrence Rashid. A lot of you already know me. I wanted to give you some information regarding an event that's going to take place on July 15th. GRIOT, which is an organization for black males, their acronym stands for greatness rediscovered in our time. We've been doing things over the past four years with fidelity on black males. This particular topic is going to deal with black male mental health awareness. And I think this is something that the district may want to take part in, especially since there's an African-American male initiative. Of the time when we think about black male mental health awareness, there's a machismo around that, and oftentimes, we need support and resources, and especially the babies. You know, a lot of the things that have been happening with law enforcement and the tragedies having occurred, we haven't really unpacked the ways in which that the babies feel. So, again, at this event, there'll be a plethora of resources provided for them and then ongoing discussions. There's also been a proliferation of blackmail suicide. And with that being said, there's going to be a short, 15-minute short, really talking about and unpacking blackmail suicide. Unfortunately, I lost a good friend early this year. Rashawn Salom, somebody you may know of him, he played for the Chicago Bears, Heisman Trophy winner. He committed suicide earlier this year. So this is a real thing that we're not unpacking. And again, I emphasize, since this is a school district that is supposed to be dealing with African-American male issues, I think that it would be wise to at least partner or send some of your young men out and/or some of your staff and so on and so forth. So again, I'm going to leave this with you. I'll also send soft copies because I have most of your emails, and we could go from there. But again, love to see you there. Please send me emails, but there's an Eventbrite where you could register because we want to make sure we have a count of the people that plan on attending. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. We move to number six, district reports. We have none. Seven hearings, we have none. Public presentations, number eight, we have none. Which brings us to number nine, consent items.
We have some revisions.
That will be pulled.
Mr. President, consent item 9H is revised. We are giving you a new revised packet reflecting a new expiration date.
9H revised, okay, thank you.
And under the human resources reports, there are revisions to both the classified and the certificated. I believe it's VB and, I can't see the other number, but the, oh, UU.
UU?
Yes.
And VB.
And VB.
Items to be pulled?
K, I said kangaroo.
K.
We just have a question on L and M.
K, L, and M. Any others?
I actually had, I'm scrolling through, I did have a question on one of the, actually, I think that's further down if I get the right.
Mr. President, RR?
RR?
Yeah.
Those K, L, M, and RR?
Then I have, I'm looking for the contract, one of the contracts, I have to see, there must be a question.
Do you have a name? We could help you look.
One of the contracts for Antioch High School, I think it's Antioch High School for 10K. I just actually had a question about.
Is it AA or VB?
The ones that you have questions, you want to just ask instead of pull? Would it be faster?
I'll ask a couple of questions. I wanted to look at the, I think the superintendent responded to email, so I think she supplied some of the data, but I just had an additional question when we get to those items.
Mr. President, R?
R?
Yeah.
Anything else? Anyone finds one we can add it? So why don't we start with K?
Well, I want to pull it for a separate vote, so if we could just leave that one alone and pull it for a separate vote.
L?
Come back down.
If you come back to K.
That's for Antioch Middle. Oh, yeah. Deborah, perhaps take a look at item EE, that might be what you're referring to. I think it meets your criteria of the amount and the school. With JFK counseling.
I had a question about the JFK one for Antioch Middle, so yeah, I have one question about that. So thank you, Nancy.
Adam.
And I think it was the one at Antioch High School with, I'm looking for it, I know it's in here because I, I'll ask it as we go along, so we don't hold up the process.
We don't want to take a vote.
We can also, the ones that aren't pulled, move forward.
Yeah, I just had a question, and really it was on the, one of the contracts for.
Perhaps VB?
Let me see. It's just a simple question, I forgot to include it. Yep, VB.
VB.
Maybe VB and CC. I'll take a quick look and take a look at it. You guys are so helpful, thank you.
We can start with VB or CC or L?
Okay, so I guess the question I have for VB is, we're going to go ahead with that one?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just thinking about, are we paying the staff to manage the PTSA? I know PTSA is a corporation and I, or to run the PTSA at a site? I just wanted to understand that a little bit better.
So I'm going to have, I'm going to have the principal of Antioch High School, Mr. Rocha, come up to address that. Mr. Rocha?
PTSA?
Yes, just a question.
PTSA, excuse me, good evening. Started summer vacation, so I wasn't dressed, but I wasn't sure I was going to come up here, but being a new grandparent and all, I'm just trying to get used to this new role. PTSA is run through the PTSA. Valma Wilson is the president of the PTSA, and we have quarterly meetings. I meet with parents, so I'm not really sure, the question was about someone being, I guess, on payroll or being, receiving compensation for the PTSA? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, for PTSA, as it says here, principal's graduation team, that's PTSA board member, and rebranding out data materials, registration information, PTSA handout. So PTSA is its own organization and someone.
Okay, yeah, so.
So I was just curious about.
She's a member, she's a member of PTSA because she has a daughter that's in ninth grade, so she's one of the parents that's on there, and they have a board, which is consists of, I think, six positions, and so she's one of the positions, the treasurer, I think, is Diane Westenhagen. I think she serves as helping out with the PTSA. Those are the two that I can think of.
Right, the question was whether or not we were paying her as a part of the contract to be on that board.
No.
Community question, I didn't understand.
No, no, it's not.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
No, that's not the case.
Thank you, that was one of the questions.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Thank you. That was it.
Did we want to vote on these individually? VB?
Sure.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Trustee Vincent, we have a second on VB.
Second.
Second, Crystal Sawyer White.
Can I kind of call for a question?
Yes.
Are we going to do this on every one of them? Go in, vote individually?
On the ones we pulled.
But we haven't.
We pulled by four or five.
We haven't voted for the whole thing. Okay, we haven't voted for the whole package pulling those, so now what we're doing is voting for the individual ones that we just discussed, not the whole gamut versus, for example, L, I want to definitely pull, I don't know if the rest of them are for conversation, or if maybe we should just have the conversations on all of them and then just vote for the package.
You can do that.
So if the maker of the motion would pull their first and the second, then we can just, it's just for efficiency. Or you can do VB and then do the rest that way, you know, it just is, if we go.
Okay, last time we voted on them individually, but I.
Yeah, and it took a while.
But we have a lot of different issues, so let's vote the ones that nobody has any questions about, approve or not, and then go back to the individual ones.
Okay, for example, I'm going to pull L, so I know I want that individually. The rest of them, if the questions get answered, we could do a motion, for example, pull everything, approve everything but L, and then after the end of the conversations.
Trustee Vincent, would you want to pull your, any objections to pulling your motion? Are we going to do this collectively?
Sure, we can do, so I rescind my motion for the VB, and I rescind it for, the other one I believe was C, CC?
No, you only did the VB.
I only did VB, okay.
And then I think Crystal had the second?
Crystal.
Was second to the VB.
It's a wash. We're done.
So next, I believe, is CC. Going to discuss CC. Have any questions answered?
So, the services that, I pulled that one too, so I guess this contract is just for building a website at Antioch Middle School, or?
Yeah, so I'm going to have the principal of Antioch Middle School, Lindsay Wisely, she's going to come up and address that question. And this is for vendor agreement with Trini Gallegos on behalf of Antioch Middle School for the 17, 18 school year.
So for us, thank you, board member Vincent. I just want to point out, so this year, Ms. Gallegos was able to help develop our Facebook page. There was 898 photos uploaded. We had 160 followers on that page. She had 408 posts into School Loop. I was able to speak to the CEO of School Loop today, and he pulled all of her, the work she did on School Loop, and it was 408 articles and postings on our page. We, as a middle school, we had, we've had over 1.1 million views to our School Loop page, and that's actually really high for only having 700 students, so we're really proud of our page. And Trini's been really driving that. And among the middle schools, we have 97% of our students using it, so there's really high use for the page, and we hope to have the same when we move into Aries. So having that, because our students are so used to logging in online, having that up and updated has been huge, and students really are utilizing that for information. And then not only the Facebook and School Loop, she was able to lead community events this year, so she helped connect us to the police chief, and we did Legos with the Law. She connected the Antioch High School Girl Power Girls to our site, and she held a mini Girl Power event on our site. She connected the engineering academy at Antioch High School to our girls on our campus, and they had an event with the Jewels of Edge, which are the girls in Antioch High School who are involved in the engineering academy. And we know that that academy is 80% male, so it's really important we get that information out to our girls. And then she also assisted me with promotion. The other Antioch High connections, because we are in Panther Country at Antioch Middle School, you know, it's, a lot of our students do go onto Antioch High even though their pathways are open. We did connect the Antioch High School Link Crew, the Peer Advocates, the Antioch High School Dance Team, which was very popular, the Antioch High School Band and Choir, Athletics, and then, like I told you, Girl Power. And then we were also able to get $14,000 in donations from Police Activities Rotary and Leo Fontana for our athletic program, and she assisted me with that.
Awesome, thank you for that detail. That's pretty good, a million views, that's pretty, that's really high.
Yeah.
Excellent data, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, I think, was K?
No, we had a.
Or L?
EE.
We had EE, we had an EE, okay, EE.
Yeah, I had, I pulled EE. I have one question, and the question is that I see that JFK counseling is only at Antioch Middle School for one day for six hours, and I actually, I guess I'm essentially asking if that's really enough to meet the need. I just wanted to put that out, I was a little concerned. I see the two days at Antioch High School, but I know middle school is a huge transition for adolescents and they have, it's a high-need developmental age, and I was just concerned that we're only doing one day. So I just want to ask that question.
That would have to do with the, with the size of the campus, and also because these are interns, for every hour that they, that they provide services, and they have to have supervision for those particular hours. And so with JFK, this is what we were able to secure for these particular sites.
So they didn't have another intern, is what you're saying?
That's.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, is that they couldn't, okay. But if so, in the future, if the need, you know, if the need was there, you all would consider making an addendum to the contract to meet the need?
Absolutely, we will take, we will take as much as they can provide.
Okay, just want to understand it, thank you. That was it.
Okay. Next is. Okay. Next is RR? RR?
I'm kinda bringing it out, sorry. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to get a little bit more information in regards to the, this like, is this, this is June first? Initially, the memorandum was understanding, um, just a little bit more information than is, so I can have a better understanding as far as this college, the college fair and stuff.
Yeah, so what this is, this is a, um, college fair that we contract with, with historically black colleges and universities. And so they come to, um, Deer Valley High School, and so we invite, um, all of our, our students in Antioch, and then also other local students come. And at, at this particular college fair, um, students come prepared with transcripts and resumes and things to that nature, and they're able to meet with college recruiters from these different campuses, and actually, they're able, on the spot, to secure scholarships. And, um, I don't, I don't have the exact number of, of last year of the amount of money that scholarships was, um, uh, that were presented to our students, but it was a, quite a substantial amount of money, um, to our, to our students that participated and...
A kid here.
Yes, it was millions.
Yeah, it was, it was amazing event. I'm really impressed with, um, even though the focus is, um, African-American students and getting them into, every student was there from surrounding schools, so I commend Deer Valley High School for doing such a, a wonderful job of rallying all the staff, and I commend the district staff also for being there to support it. I thought Kelly did a great job, so I think it's just, um, I think it's pretty good. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a, so it's a college fair where the recruiters come out to, to our school. We host it. Um, we, we contract with this organization, and they bring them out, and our students ultimately benefit from this.
Oh, okay, since I'm new to the board, is...
Right, that's true.
I mean, I read this, but...
Yeah.
Um, my suggestion is, and I conveyed this to the board and the superintendent, is we, if we could track these, the students who graduate from Deer Valley Antioch High School in ten historically black colleges, possibly, and they could come back to our district as teachers, counselors, and what have you, that's what Pittsburgh is doing, and other districts. So it would be a great thing, I think.
Great.
This is a suggestion.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, what do you have next, Nancy? Your list?
I guess we're going back to single-digit, and it would be K?
K. I think we have K, LM, and R. Yeah. K.
K, K is, I'm sorry, K is the one I want pulled, not L. And I wanna pull it completely and just get it separate.
I was gonna question that, yeah.
You wanna do that? Okay.
So, so K's holding in it, then I had M and R.
L, I think we have that, L also.
L, M, and R.
No, K's being pulled, but the discussion was, I still showed something for M?
I pulled L and M.
L, L, M, and R.
That is correct, so yes.
So that's Deborah, and then R was Crystal.
Okay, so L?
So, um, essentially, for, uh, the change orders, I just was, um, looking at the increase in price. And I just wanna make sure that we're, we're covering the increases, and I wanted to understand what the increase was about. That's all. If anyone knows, if not, it's just a question.
Yes, Ms. Vice President, we, um, submitted a Friday letter to you, explaining the details of the increases for this project. Would you like me to state some of those increases?
Yes.
And so I guess my number one question is, we, we have the money to support all the increases, 'cause we seem to have a lot of change orders coming through, and so whether it's materials or whatever, it's just I wanna make sure we're on par, that we're still gonna be able to, to meet the need and complete the project.
Yes.
That's basically what the question is about.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes care of LM?
Same thing. Those two work together.
Together, R?
Oh, okay.
Crystal, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think I read this, it's, this is, uh, great steps in regards to, um, offering this course. I'm just curious that, um, we're addressing African-American males. Would we would consider a Latino, uh, type of course, and, and similar to this one? I attended a conference, not a conference, my first conference, and they had ethnic studies, which reflect our student body, primarily Latinos. And they had some courses they offered. It was a Los Angeles district school. So I think that, that we should consider that, like Cesar Chavez, um, some type of course like that in relevance to the African-American students, similar to this. Would you consider that? This is a question.
Absolutely. Yes, we will.
Okay.
And the course is open to all, to all students, and...
Right.
Where, where we've, um, been working with and, and observing the pilot, there are many different, um, students from different ethnic backgrounds participating in the course in, in the district where we've been, um, observing and partnering with. But it is open to, to all students, and we are open to looking at, at, at additional courses that represent the student bodies represented in our district.
Right, so I noticed it says identity, um, as far as, you know, identifying with your culture. And, and the issue also with Safe Haven, you know, many students were saying they didn't feel safe. Um, I think if, you know, address, um, Latino studies, then they would feel more comfortable and not, it'd be more inclusive.
Thank you.
This is a suggestion.
Yep, thank you.
So, and I have just one question in reference to this. I know, um, that we had the Afri-, we had the African-American male initiative, and, uh, is this in any way supporting that, or is this really, um, you know, what's, aside from this binocultural identity, is it, 'cause I know it seems that the African-American male initiative project was on a, um, a very large upward growth, and the idea was to pilot that program and then move it to other ethnic groups throughout the district. So I'm wondering if this is also going to be a part of that whole process? Are we letting the African-American male initiative go?
No, the African, this course is a result of the African-American male initiative.
Got it, okay, just wanna, okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe we're ready for, to pull K separately for discussion and vote?
So, so I move approval for everything with the exception of K with updates.
It, it would be a revision to G, T, T, U, U, pulling out in K.
As she said.
Everyone agree?
That's a motion.
Okay.
Did we get, did we get through everything? Walter's checking.
I believe we did, yes.
Oh, um, okay, so I, I did have a question on LL before we do that.
Okay, LL?
If we can have it second, then we can have conversation. Somebody wants to second the motion?
Second, thank you.
Okay, we'll have a second, and then discussion, comments on...
So, um, I had the, the same, the same ques-, the same question about this as well, is, um, this is, is this another course? What is this?
Yeah, so this is, um, this is, um, part of the African-American male initiative.
Okay.
And, um, and this is our purchase of the curriculum and training.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, so the, um, we had a first, a second, and a comment. Now we're ready to vote on the motion and second, approval of everything but K. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent calendar passes, the exception of K, which will now be discussed.
Okay, I wanna discuss this one. This is a four-year lease. I'm thinking they're on a month-to-month right now. We discussed this in closed session a year ago. It's less than ten cents a square foot. I would like to ask that we not vote on this and have it as a closed-session item so we can evaluate the property and what we wanna do with it. This is a four-year agreement, and it's, the, the closest I could find, um, another place was at a dollar thirty-five square, thirty-five cents a square foot. This is just way too low, in my humble opinion.
I actually had some questions about this as well, and I just wanted to know if, if this was at, um, market, this isn't at market value, though, correct?
Well, she was gonna answer the question, so...
Hi, I'm Randy. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Never been at the podium before. Good evening. Um, we did hire an appraiser to, um, I just actually met with him yesterday morning. They are not on a month-to-month contract, 'cause they're still up till June thirtieth. If you do not approve tonight, then we can reevaluate if they can go on month-to-month. I'm not sure how you calculated the ten cents, 'cause I think...
It's sixteen hundred, and it's a fifteen hundred square foot. They're paying sixteen hundred for fifteen, I forget.
Yeah, it's fifteen hundred for sixteen hundred square feet, but they're also paying all the utilities, all the special sewer taxes. The only thing that we're paying for is, uh, the, um, POA, the property.
So you don't think that is a very, you think that's a reasonable rent?
Not necessarily. That's why we are encouraging the appraisal.
Yeah, and that's why I don't wanna move forward on a four-year lease.
Okay.
I would like to poll it and then discuss our options. It's nothing, you know, that the staff has done.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, we just keep redoing this lease over and over again, and, you know, sometimes we need to look at things a little differently.
I am hoping that the appraisal will definitely solidify what we should be renting it for.
And if it does, it does, that's great, but in the meantime, I have concerns.
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna concur and say we should probably bring this back after we get the appraisal.
Yes, it'll take one month. Thank you.
So we need a motion to...
So I would like a motion to pull it and bring it back at a later date.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Gets pulled, uh, to be brought back, perhaps in a month. Okay, um... That's it. On the consent calendar, we move to item number ten, action items, Office of Administrative Hearings.
I move approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ten A gets carried unanimously. Item B, adopt two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen local control accountability, LCAP plan.
So...
Do we have a comment part?
I'm sorry, we're getting a card.
For, for that item?
Have it just left.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Memes? Comment on ten B?
To the board, members of the community, Willie Memes, members of East County NAACP, and also a member of Pittsburgh Black Book Association. I just wanted to say a couple of things. In terms of your Greatest Needs section on your LCAP,
Excuse me.
In your, on your LCAP plan, uh, it talks about the suspension rates and the, um, I was concerned about the African-American subgroup, which has the highest suspension rate in this plan right here, I mean, according to the, um, the, um, Greatest Needs section in your LCAP plan. The, um, so my question and concern is, how much of the plan is actually addressing that particular area of concern, since it is considered as one of your greatest needs? The other thing is that, you know, on your Smarter Balance test, state test last year, I mean, excuse me, for two thousand sixteen, the two thousand seventeen has not yet come out, but two thousand sixteen, uh, on the Smarter Balance test, uh, you had eighty-five percent of African-American third graders that did not test proficient in English Language Arch. You had seventy-seven percent of fourth graders that didn't test proficient. Seventy-eight percent of fifth graders that didn't test proficient. Eighty-five percent of sixth graders didn't test proficient. Eighty-two percent of seventh graders. That's the highest subgroup in terms of not testing proficient in English Language Arch. Your LCAP goal number two, under Security Services, you took one million thirteen thousand dollars from the Supplemental Concentration Grant Funds to, to, to fund your security services. The LCAP, I mean, the Supplemental Concentration Grant Funds is not designed to support security services, but it's here, if in some kind of way, you've taken it out. The other thing is, um, on your, um, budget expenditure, no, it's something else. On your, um, action number six, on page twenty-two oh one seventy, you have the vice principals that, again, are being funded from the LCAP, from the Supplemental Concentration Grant Funds. I think they are, because in your plan here, I don't see a funding source. I see vice principals were hired at every site, but there's no amount of money that's being stipulated. And also, uh, where's the money coming from? So if I can get that answer.
We will definitely have staff reach out to Mr. Memes.
Okay. Let the staff get back to you on that. Item C, final adoption.
There needs to be a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, um...
Item ten B.
Ten B, what is the deadline for approving this LCAP? What are we looking at?
June thirtieth.
Okay, so June thirtieth is the deadline. Okay.
It can always be revised and resubmitted as well.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion on ten B?
I do have a question.
Yes, question?
Mr. President, yeah, I notice also home visits were not conducted. I think home visits shouldn't be conducted as far as research and things like that, so... I was just, I know, I made a note of that, that was in the draft. How can we address kids of color if home visits aren't conducted?
Yes, may I bring up Mr. Murphy on that item?
Good evening, board. Um, so the action referring to home visits, what that's referring to is that the Supplemental Concentration Resource, that allocation wasn't applied to the activity, but sites did do home visits, and they authorized those activities under their academic plans. So in the interest of being efficient as a, as a district and using our funds wisely, we decided to go forward with the programandit, programand, programmatic, excuse me, guidance of continuing to support the sites and using their site allocations to pursue home visits while allowing the SNC allocation to be restored to other programs in, in the SNC programs. So that's why it's not funded for this year, and we noted it in annual update.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Do I hear a motion on ten B?
I'm gonna say a second, but I'm also going to say that...
I'm going to say a second, but I'm also going to say that as a board member, I'll, you know, be taking a look at this with some of the detail as outlined by community members, just so we're in line with what the state is required as far as our LCAP. I think we're, I think we're continuing to make progress, you know, so, you know, I want to honor that. But, you know, go ahead and vote to approve this with the intent that we are always going to look at this for revision based on community comments.
Is there any deadline for the revisions or?
Living document, I mean.
It's a living document, my understanding.
The LCAP is required to be submitted with the annual budget by June 30th, and we will have the opportunity to revise. What usually happens in the process is that the County Office of Education will provide us feedback. Associate Superintendent Clark actually has been in consultation with them already and giving us guidance on our document, and we've been applying edits. So we will have the opportunity to continue to update the LCAP with community feedback as well as feedback from the County Office of Education.
We had a motion and a second?
I didn't catch the first, please.
It was Gary.
Gary, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 10C, final adoption budget. Does anybody want to address that?
Ms. Santa Maria?
Yes, I had made the presentation, detailed presentation at the last board meeting, so I'm not going to do that tonight, but just want to emphasize a little bit of the information. If you look at pages three and four, I promised the board that I would bring all the funds in the budget packet. So there are actually 12 funds that are included in our total funding. And of course, general fund is the fund that finances the operations of the district. And on page four, it shows that general fund consists about 55.2% of the total funds. Starting on page 17, each fund is highlighted and explained. I won't go through that in details, but I would like to emphasize that the other funds are restricted and they cannot be used for general fund operations. Now, yesterday, the budget has been signed, and the thing that's changed from the May revise is the fact that the one-time discretionary money is allotted for fiscal year 17 and 18. However, today, we checked with the County Office of Ed, and there's no confirmation yet as to the exact amount and when, as to when the state will really give us the money. Tomorrow, we have a session with capital advisors, so we will, we're hoping to get more information on that one.
We have a public comment card. Mr. Memes on 10C.
One thing I noticed that on your budget, there's no item that, that shows the public how much was carried over from the lack of funding from the school sites. So I know that the school sites did not extend all the funds, so it should be a line item in here that describes how much was carried over or not used. So if that's in there, I'd like to know where it is, but I didn't see it. The, under your expenditure, expenditure assumptions, under the electric and gas section, it went up $200,000. Now, my understanding is that you did install solar panels. That was supposed to reduce your electric bill, but it didn't seem to do anything. So I'm wondering if you just wasted money on that. The other thing is on page 72 of 170, under actions, services included, as contributing to meeting the increase and improve services requirement. The first line, line underneath that says, students, I cannot see, students to be served. Not one of these boxes are checked, but you're using supplemental concentration grant funds to fund your deferred maintenance. Now deferred, I'm coming back to you deferred maintenance because below at the bottom of that, there's the $800,000 again showing up in deferred maintenance. Now, those funds are supposed to be attached to the subgroups, but you don't have one subgroup that those funds are attached to. So the illegal use of this money is, 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 is actually a violation of the law because you're not supposed to use, this money's supposed to be attached to the subgroups. But as, as you see in this page here on 70, on page 72, it's not attached to anything except for deferred maintenance, and that is all. There are check boxes, but nothing is checked. It can't be checked because deferred maintenance do not teach and work with children. They work with buildings. Okay, I'm just, 24 seconds, let's see. Basically, that was the gist of what I found, but I know there was a lot more problematic areas within this budget, but that was the main thing. I'm concerned about the, the, the use and misuse of the supplemental concentration grant funds. Thank you.
Any other board trustee comments, questions, or a motion for 10C?
So I'm, I'm going to say that I consider the budget also to be a living document, and when the, when we find out what our apportionment will be from the state, I'm expecting that this budget will come back with that information sooner rather than later so that the board can see where the money is being allotted and to see how we are actually utilizing the supplemental concentration funds, so.
Yes, absolutely. Forty-five days after the budget had been signed, which was yesterday, sometime in August, we will do a 45-day budget revision. We also have interim reports, first interim and second interim, where we can adjust or modify the budgets as needed.
And then I, I do want to say I'm really pleased that the, the governor did not put a hold on those funds, that they were released. And I'm also, also wanting to see in terms of Prop 98 and some of the other funding, where, where that money is. And I did receive that detail today, and so I'm looking forward to have it highlighted in this budget. The only other comment I'm going to make is I know we applied for the facilities grant, or we submitted an application for a facilities fund that the voters voted on, and I'm hoping at some point that we'll have that information also included on this budget. I don't know when we're going to see where we are in the lineup. I know it's a first-come, first-served basis, but I thought we got our application in pretty early.
Yes, we did, and we're also working on the third, fourth, and fifth phases.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would like to recommend to the board that we look at the budget quarterly and look at any funds that are unspent and then talk about how we can put them in play rather than wait for a large, and I know I've had this conversation before, rather than wind up with a large ending fund balance. So if we look at it quarterly, prioritize the money that's unspent, and then put it into play. That would be something I would like to do if the boards agreeable.
Yes, is the board agreeable?
So I think that's a good idea, but we are going to come back in August for our work study, and I'd like for all of that to be included so that when we work on our strategies, we are actually including these comments and making them action items so that, you know, I agree. So I just want to put that out there.
And I just want to make sure it's quarterly.
Right, we can, we heard you, but yeah, August.
Good points. 10C, do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Motion to approve Gibson-Grey.
Second.
Second, Vinsone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 10D, approval of amendment to employment agreements for Stephanie Anello, Superintendent Adam Clark, uh, Superintendent, Adam Clark, Associate Superintendent Educational Services, and Jessica Romero, Chief Human Resource Officer. Anyone wishing to introduce that?
I'll introduce it. On the agenda this evening is the addendums to the contracts for Ms. Anello, myself, and Dr. Clark. The contracts and the amendments include a two-year extension to the employment term. It includes a 2% increase effective 7/1/16 and a 1% increase effective 7/1/17, which was the same increase that was given to the rest of our employees here in the district, and then the step increase that each individual would receive under the salary schedule. The law requires that those not be automatic, but they be brought into a board meeting and voted on in a regularly scheduled meeting in public.
You have to click on the bottom, Deborah. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Got it, I see it now, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
So I'm, I'm just going to make a comment and just want to clarify. So the, the contracts are in agreement for adding the two, two additional years to where the contracts are now.
Correct. Under our current contract, they would expire on June 30, 2018. This would extend them through 2020.
And I'm just going to go on public record and say that I would be happy extending the contracts one year until we're, have our budgets and everything finalized, and I feel fairly confident that, you know, we are stabilizing as a district, you know, monetarily. And so that would be my only input. I, I would accept an additional year, but I will not accept the two years because then that would mean the contract would be for three years, to extend it out. So that's just my personal comments.
And my question is, this is, so to speak, a joint, not an individual raise, increase. We have to vote on all three. It can't be individual.
The board has discretion to do whatever they choose, but they were brought together as one line item, yes. And all of the, the three, the three items that we went through are identical for each individual. The only difference being what step they're on and what step they would increase to. Those are the only differences in the contract, which is why I put them all together.
And for clarity, let's say things didn't work out, what's the maximum payout for each employee?
I believe on Superintendent Anello, it's a nine-month, and on Dr. Clark and myself, it's a six-month.
So the additional years don't buy them anything?
Doesn't really buy us anything.
And what's typical, those positions?
Three years is very typical. You know, there's, there's a variety. Some go four years, some go two years, but I would say in Contra Costa County and Alameda, you're usually looking at a three-year contract. The, under the law, a superintendent's contract cannot be more than, you can't have a buyout for more than 12 months. And for assistant superintendent, I don't think that's changed from 18 months. I could be wrong, but ours doesn't allow for that anyway. It only allows for the six months.
Because you agreed to that.
Because we agreed to that last year. We did change our contract last year.
Do I hear a motion?
So move. Tie goes to the runner, Gary. I'll take it second.
Trustee Hack first, seconded by trustee Gibson-Grey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
We have three yays, two nays. Motion carries. Item E, revise senior management salary schedule.
The senior management salary schedule in front of the board is to adopt the salary schedule which would do, which would document the action the board just took. So there would, because you have to provide a salary schedule to both STERS and PERS. So what this would do is have a 7-1 salary schedule, which was the 2% for 1617, that would go into effect. And so that's one salary schedule, and the next one that we have in front of you is to implement the 1% on January 1st, 2017. And we have to bring salary schedules for all employee groups so that we have something approved for purposes of retirement. That's really what this is about.
So that references the agreement that was made with the other employee groups?
Correct, and this would, the, the contracts that the board just approved, this is the salary schedule that goes along with that. It's nothing additional.
But it's also principals, administrators, it's-
This is just your senior staff.
It's just senior staff, okay.
The principals you brought at an earlier board meeting, yes.
Okay, and so this is just for all of the administrators?
This is for senior staff, correct.
All administrators and soup, okay.
No, not all administrators. It's for Superintendent Anello, Dr. Clark, myself, and actually Ms. Santa Maria on the salary schedule as well.
Got it.
And it references the same percentages that other employee groups got?
Absolutely. It is the exact same salary increases that were given to all other employees in Antioch Unified.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second. Moved and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, a discussion by board, discussion on items represented by Board Trustee Vinsone, board policy 9240 and board development.
So I think I was, I was initially bringing this back because we made some decisions and we talked about that, and I think, I appreciate, thank you, that, you know, that Ms. Nancy went through and highlighted the minutes, but one of the things that was considered was, I brought in a grand jury report based on what other districts were, were going through in terms of training for all of their board members, but I think one of the main concerns was for a new board member and looking at the training for that. And so one of the things that I was highlighting is that I was actually appreciating this board for setting aside 3K because it had not been done before for each board member. And so I just want to clarify that. By bringing it up again because there were some additional concerns, but we did all vote to approve that amount with the understanding that if there were any additional amounts for any training, it would have to come by the board for consensus for approval. And I just want to make sure that if we made that decision or, just to get back up for clarification.
The concern was that I had that initially, that we voted prior to this annual conference that's going to be held in San Diego, and the cost is $2,500, and we would receive $3,000. So that would leave us with $500 for the entire year to attend conferences and training. And I don't think that's adequate enough. In my understanding, the district pays for the annual conference, and we wouldn't take it out of our budget, we would have the flexibility to attend the conferences that we would like to attend.
Did, did you get this? I just want to make sure you got it because I, I know you'd left the meeting, but we talked about the CSBA.
Yes, I read it.
And the conversation was you could opt not to go to CSBA and spend all the money on a governance training. You know, it gave you flexibility that way, where in the past it only paid for CSBA, period. The, I originally suggested $20,000, Ms. Vincent raised it to $3,000. It still provides the flexibility, but you can go to CSBA, or you can go do other ones. You can go to TEN in Sacramento if you want. I mean, you can spend your $3,000 however you want, and that was discussed.
Okay, my understanding that all district board members attend the annual conference, and it's not actually-
No, no, we, we, we used, we always attended it.
Not, I don't mean Antioch, I mean, yeah, I meant, members in California, the state of California. They don't have this problem. I talked to other board members in other cities, and it's not an issue. It's not an issue.
They have their budget, they have their travel allowance, you know, it's whatever. I'm just saying, we did talk about it, and that's all I'm trying to clarify, is that you can go to CSBA, or you can spend your $3,000 somewhere else, or we can even have another conversation about upping it, but it's a lot of money for- conversation about upping it, but it's a lot of money for school board, school boards. So you're already at 3,000 times five.
Okay. And the other issue is that master of governance, that takes time to attend those conferences. So I would not be able to complete in my four-year term, master of governance classes because I have to pay for me to attend annual conference. And I just want to give you some information. These annual conferences, they're just actual, like, classes that you attend on random at your leisure. It's not really a training seminar conference. It's at the beginning for new board members. They introduce, you know, the board members, they get information. We learn about the Brown Act vaguely. I mean, it's just a brief synopsis. And I just feel that I'm being, I mean, as a board member, I've gone through this, I don't know, in the last three, four months to ask, I'm, trustee Vincent just attended her first board training, and they're almost done. I know Compton, Piedmont, they're finished with all the classes. And they have a master of governance training certificate or whatever you call it. That's relevant to being a board trustee, to be more knowledgeable and be abriss as far as the laws, attending Sacramento, and just knowing what the laws are about. So I'm not understanding, I don't even know what the budget is for board development. We don't have that policy 9214. I asked about that. We had 9318, which is for conferences only. Board development is to, to be more knowledgeable as a board trustee and be abriss as far as the laws. And I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what else to say.
And I'm not disagreeing. I mean, each masters of governance is around, what, $300? I mean, you could spend 3,000 and get all of those sessions in one year if you wanted. I, just don't go to the CSBA. Pick and choose what you want. That's, that would be my preference. It's $3,000. You can do a lot of education for $3,000.
Well, not to argue with a calculator here, but you could, the one in San Francisco, the local one, is probably closer to $2,000, which would leave $1,000 for several of these masters and governances, only there's five of them. I think it's, I think it's a nice compromise. I called Liberty today and found out that their budget is $11,000 for the board for the year, which would be $2,200 each trustee. My wife sat on the county board for four years. She got an allowance of 3,000 a year, and that's still in effect. The county board gets 3,000 per trustee. So I think 3,000 is a reasonable figure. Now, I will say, I do have to give kudos to Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh does, doesn't have a cap. It doesn't mean they'll give you anything you want, you still have to request it, but they don't have an official cap. And they do encourage masters and governance. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't begrudge anybody. If somebody's got, spent $2,700, $2,800, and they have a couple of hundred dollars left, I'm not going to stop them from going on a masters and governance for another $400, $500. So I think we have the provision. All you have to do is ask, just say, "Look, I'm running out of my budget this year, but I would like to do this training." I don't, I don't think you'd get a lot of resistance, any of us on that matter.
And just to add to it, we've always just gone to CSBA. Well, I'm in my ninth year. I'm kind of tired of CSBA. It's the same stuff. So I'm thinking about using my money for masters and governance and not going to San Diego. That's the flexibility that we've not had in the past. So I think it's a, a good compromise.
Okay. Based on the grand jury report, the amount this allotted, so to speak, to each board member is based on the number of students that enroll in the district. Liberty, I mean, Brentwood is a small district. Pittsburgh is a small district. And so we really, if you multiply how many students, the report that, Ms. Vincent, could you elaborate on that? It's beyond $3,000.
So actually, just to elaborate, and I don't have the report with me, that is true. Some districts had allotted 15K per year for board members to attend training. And so a lot of, some of them didn't use it, but part of the grand jury report reflected that it's incumbent upon board members to go to training so that they can make the best decisions because a school district is also a business. And you have to be able to learn about the needs of what's, what the district requires. So you can not only support the staff, but number one, support the students and make sure that you understand LCAP plans, et cetera, et cetera. And that report was done, I'd say about 10 years ago. So I was really surprised that some of the districts had allocated almost 15K or as needed per district for some of the board members. The only other thing I'm going to say is, since this revise in the budget, and when we come back to look at the budget and look at what, what we actually have based on that one-time money, I, you know, I'm hoping that if, you know, there's going to be some openness, I've heard from everyone that they're not going to actually preclude if anyone wants to go to a training, they just bring it back. And we're all open to training now, which in the past, I don't think it was an issue. So I commend you for bringing it up. I don't even think it was on our radar that, you know, to be, that to be effective board members, we absolutely need to have all these trainings, and we need to understand the decisions that we're making that impacts our district. And so I commend trustee Sawyer White for even bringing it to our attention. And so I think the 3K is a start. I don't think it means that, so I think if she wanted to do, if you wanted to do a masters in governance and you ran out of money, just bring the bill back to us and the board, and we'll take a look and probably approve it. Or, you know, we'll have some discussions about it.
Preapproval. You just don't bring the bill.
No, but I'm saying that we can have some discussion about it still. I'm just saying that if, if that's indeed the case, preapproval, approval, fine. But I'm just saying in general, I, I think we have a start. And so I absolutely hear what you're saying. I absolutely get it.
To segue, and that, by the way, in Pittsburgh, you can't be president unless if you have a masters in governance.
It's true.
They require you to take those five sessions.
Shoot, can I take back my presidency then?
Yeah, every district have different requirements for their board members, but they ideally want their board members to be as knowledgeable as possible because you have to interact with the community, and it informs our decisions. So I hear you. And as they say, I'm, you know, we're all awakened now. We're woke by, by this idea. So, you know, we, I think it's important, and I appreciate you for bringing it to our attention.
And I don't want to set our budget by the grand jury report, so.
Of course. We can't do that because we have declining enrollment. And so we have the 3K, we'll leave it at the, at the 3K. But at the same time, we're also approving salaries, et cetera, you know, increases, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very cautious in terms of the budget. And, and until we're stabilized and, you know, working out our details with our declining enrollment and having some upward mobility and numbers, I'm, I'm going to remain cautious. It's just me.
And also, I'd say the conference, the feedback was one of the best conferences. I mean, when it was first, they had astronauts at the, that spoke at the end of the conference. And one of the actors from Law &amp; Order, he's developed a film course, which I think is relevant to expanding our curriculum. They had 21st Century Practice Technology Training speakers from Columbia University. So I don't think the conferences are the same every year. This was an outstanding conference that I attended.
The last one was one of the better ones. I would agree with that. So...
Okay. Live discussion. Number 12, resolutions for first reading, none. 13, resolutions for immediate action. Resolution number 2016735 for approval of the education protection account, known as EPA, for the fiscal year 2017-18.
Yes, Mr. President. This resolution talks about the requirement for school districts, county office of education, and community colleges pursuant to Article 13, Section 36 of the California Constitution regarding the EPA account. We are required to submit to the board or discuss in open sessions the planned expenditures for these funds. And if you look at the attachment, it shows that the total amount of 20 million is budgeted towards the instructional part of our schools.
Okay. Just, okay, do I hear a motion on that?
So just to ask a question. So we're allocating the bulk of our budget, 20 million, for all the items outlined here. And so we did have an end in balance of 26, or we had a positive fund balance of 26 million at some point. So is that correct?
This 20 million is part of the total funding. Our total budget is about $198 million.
Got it, $198. I thought I saw something. It said 26, okay.
That's the ending.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Vincent, second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, resolutions for second reading and actions, none. 15, board policies for first reading, none. Board policies number 16 for second reading and action on adoption of updated board policies.
So at the beginning of the school year, the board asked that we update our policies to align with the California School Boards Association, as many of ours were quite outdated. What you see before you is a collaborative effort between ourselves and the California School Board Association to align to their policies. So the policies before you this evening do align, and they come before you for a second read and adoption.
So I just, I just want to comment and say that we asked that these policies be updated last year. So I'm glad to finally see them get updated. And I will be reading each of them individually, but I will not hold up the policies not being distributed at this time. But I will review them and come back with any concerns later.
Do I hear a motion on that?
So moved.
Trustee Hack.
Second.
Second. Trustee Vincent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Number 17, information in anticipation of future action. Don't believe we have anything. 18, information items for general information, updated administrative rules. Who will be speaking on that?
The administrative rules, board policy actually states the policy of the district. Administrative rules are a guideline for how those policies will be carried out. And so before you are the updated administrative rules to align with district practice as well as CSBA.
And I'll be doing the same thing with these. I'll be looking at them and reviewing, and any concerns, I'll bring them back. But just glad we updated the policies. We're not in 1979 anymore.
19, future agenda items?
We have, held back and approved.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have the administrative rule. Do I ever hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved?
You don't need, it's just for information.
Oh, it's just information, got it. Thank you.
Number 19, future agenda items from board members?
The only thing I'm going to put out there is just a possibility in August, the date, for our strategic meeting. Something we should be thinking about for, for the future date. After everybody's back from vacation, I guess. I don't know.
And formally request the quarterly budget sessions?
Yes, and formally request it, yeah.
Item 20, I don't believe we have any comments from the public or from... Number 21, reports from board members on memberships, other organizations, or district business?
Mr. President, I attended Deer Valley Math Summer School Program last week, and I was quite impressed. And robotics, walked around with Dr. Schachelfer, and I was quite pleased. The only issue was that one of the classes, algebra class, the students were repeating the course because they had a substitute algebra teacher for the entire year. So if we could better track the student, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the teachers, as far as the substitute teachers who are filling in on an annual basis, or what, what is the status of that as far as algebra?
So substitute teachers, depending on what credential they hold, and primarily your substitute teachers are going to be 30-day subs. The teacher up at Deer Valley was not a vacancy. It was someone who was out on leave. And there is a new credential that recently went in last year, which is called a TIPSIL, which allows you to put in a particular credential for someone to stay in a class more than 30 days so long as it's an approved leave under the law, and you meet certain criteria. So Ms. Phillips from my office worked diligently to put a program together, and we've had four or five of our substitutes go through the program, and we're continuing to do that so that as we have teachers who are on leave, and again, those are leaves that are authorized by law. It's not something we have an option on. As those are, are there, we're not having to do a turnaround of 30-day subs because the, you know, the state recognizes that that's not an effective program for students. So we'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just going to say that my daughter graduated from UCLA last weekend with a masters in higher educate, and she graduated from Antioch High School and one of the students that took a lot of AP courses. So I remain hopeful for all of our students. I know there are some concern about our students attending UCs, and I know there was an entire cohort of students that did attend UCs, and if we were to track it, I think we'd be very surprised. And I'm also looking forward to actually visiting the summer school program. And I just want to say to Joe, thank you. I've not heard any complaints about internet and them not being able to be, be online to get their work done. So I, I think we're continuing to make progress.
Future meetings, July 28th, August 9th, and August 23rd.
And just to clarify, July 29th is as only if needed meeting?
28, yes.
Whatever it is.
Yes. It has an asterisk next to it. July 28th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Moved. Seconded.
I guess we'll just stay, we'll just stay then.
Okay.
We don't have to leave.
All those in favor?